Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, sir.
Well, yeah, we gotta wait for... We can start and do the pledge. We might have to wait a second for Matt to come back to do the police report.
Uh, whoops.
We can get started.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Welcome to this July 15th meeting of the Patton Township Board of Supervisors. I'd like to note that not all of our supervisors are here, too, are with us remotely. I also want to note that anybody in the viewing audience who wishes to make a comment may do so by using the phone number that is, I believe, posted right in front of Mr. Trevania. And so with that, I would like to invite everyone to stand, if you're able, and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own basis, its legal and justice for all. There's a comment that's here. So the first order of business is to hear any comments from the public. If anyone is interested, you can call in or maybe have sent an email in.
No, no, no general comments. We've received comments on several of the items, and those were all included as attachments to the agenda and in the updates that were provided.
Okay. Great. Can people still hear me? Let me just...
Somebody's...
It could be. I'm unmuted. I mean, I'm...
Yeah, no.
My speaker is silent.
I'm unmuted. I mean, I'm...
But it doesn't sound like it.
My speaker isn't.
But it doesn't sound like it.
Okay, now you need to stay muted.
I need to stay muted?
Yeah.
I need to stay... Gotcha. Right about there. Okay.
Oh, your sidecar's disconnected again.
Yeah, I almost got...
It's just not holding it for some reason.
Yeah, that these isn't working. Okay. We'll just have to muddle through.
Okay. All righty. The next item on the agenda is going to be a report on public safety. I believe Matt Chapenko is going to deliver that. If you can introduce yourself again, I'm sure people know who you are.
Yep, that is me. My name is Matt Chapenko. I'm a patrol sergeant here at Patton Township. And if I'm here, you know Chief Jolly's on vacation, so... It's always a pleasure to be here for my annual visit.
Good to have you.
And our public safety for the report for the month of June, you'll see things, I'm sure, as you're all aware, because of COVID, numbers tend to be a little bit different than they would normally be. But you'll see here, we had 87 traffic stops, 15 traffic citations, nine criminal arrests in June 2020. Bike patrol was pretty active in June with a little over 120 miles and a couple incidents. Don't expect those kinds of numbers for July with heat, though.
Okay.
As far as any unusual incidents, nothing too major for June. We did have a couple drug arrests, one resulting from a search warrant that was conducting a reference to a drug overdose. Another one where someone had actually dropped some cocaine on the floor of a convenience store and reviewed video was able to determine the actor in that. We had a hit-and-run DUI where someone struck an occupied vehicle and then fled the scene. Had an incident where someone was arrested for a minor retail theft, but because they gave some false information, so they would not be arrested for the felony warrant that they were wanted for out of Lycom and that they got charged with some additional misdemeanor, so... And four individuals arrested for retail theft. We served 10 of 17 warrants in June. And that's about it for the arrests for June. As far as community relations, Officer Tuskovich, who is our school resource officer and our community police officer, he assisted with a couple student parades at the beginning of June. You'll see in your board materials, there's fortunately no hate mail, but it looks like there's some nice letters that the community wrote in support of us. I believe the chief attached those. Training and department activities, again, because of the ongoing situation, that's a bit curtailed, too. But a couple officers attended tactical response team training on two dates. And Officer Schaefer, who is our drug recognition expert and who's good at it, is getting better as he attended the instructor certification here this month. And also speaking of Officer Schaefer, he had been nominated for the 2019 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award for the county. And as of the other week, it was announced that he would be receiving the award for his actions in that tragedy at Ramada. So we appreciate that. And then you'll also see a list of calls here that we had for the month, a little bit up from May. Again, things are a little bit different with the coronavirus situation, but you'll see about the usual gambit of calls, nothing too out of the ordinary. All generally what we would kind of categorize as quote-unquote routine calls. So if you guys have had a chance to review and have any questions on any of that, I'd be happy to answer it.
Any questions from the board, members of the board?
I think I need a hand.
Okay. And I actually have one. I noticed that there's one call complaint from being badgered at a store, customer at a store. I was just wondering, have you gotten any complaints concerning mask wearing or not wearing?
Yes. It is sort of on both sides. People complaining about having to wear a mask, and more often it is we're getting calls about someone maybe calling about a specific patron in a store who's not wearing a mask or they're under the impression maybe the business is not following correct practices and they're not wearing a mask. So we have mediated in a number of those situations. Nothing's gotten out of hand, but we've been happy to educate folks and let them know exactly what the law is.
Yeah. And I understand you can't do anything but mediate, but that's very important.
Correct. I think that's what we try to do in every circumstance.
Yes.
The last thing I ever want to do is arrest someone. But we try to mediate and find peaceful solutions so everyone understands the law and hopefully abide by it.
And I see that Anita Tease has a question.
Oh, sure.
Get her hands up. Yeah.
Yes. I think it is wonderful that Officer Schaefer has been recognized as the center county, one of the center county law enforcement officers of the year. And I'm wondering if the Board of Supervisors could write a letter of recognition and congratulations to the officer that could be included in his personnel file.
So move.
Second.
We can do that. Yeah. District attorneys will be scheduling a award ceremony at some point in the future. They're trying to do it in August, but we're gonna wait, I think, until the situation's a little better. But, yeah, we would include that also at the time of the award. I think we'll just call that by consensus. The board will take that action.
So just to be formal, to take a vote on that, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay.
Also, I was intrigued by the threefold increase in business checks by bicycles in June and the fivefold increase in mileage, my goodness, from 23 miles to 120 miles. I wondered if you could explain for the public and for myself, what is involved when a police officer on the bicycle makes a business check? That those went from 81 to 250. Could you tell us a little bit about what a business check is for those of us who are still...
Sure. No, typically what... When we're on a... And I'm one of the bicycle officers, so I can speak from experience. But when we're on the bicycle, we're kind of limited as far as our response. You know, we can only respond with a certain area, so we're... We generally do very specific duties when we're on the bike. So a lot of it is if there's a call nearby, we'll respond to it. And then our business checks typically mean going... At night, they'll mean riding around the business complexes, checking the doors, make sure they're locked, making sure there's no broken windows or anything like that. During the day, we'll ride through businesses, make contact with the store owners or patrons, more to say hi and just sort of give a friendly wave and say, hey, we're out here if you need anything. But generally, just sort of, like, for instance, like, I'll take my bike and I'll ride through Wegmans, and not through Wegmans, but through the parking lot of Wegmans, make sure, you know, everything looks safe, make contact with maybe the employee who's outside. And I apologize, my nose is so big, it always drags my mask down over my chin. But no, just typically making contact with businesses, making sure they're secure, and responding to any calls in those areas.
Are the business checks usually requested by the businesses? Or is this a matter of, you know, to go from 81 to 250? Is June a month that you usually have a lot of folk coming back into towns, visitors and such, and that's why you're doing... I mean, I think the business checks are wonderful. I just wondered.
Right. Actually, the main factor driving it is apparently in June 2019, we were somewhat limited to being on the bike, because I see we only rode 23 miles on the bike as opposed to this June where we rode 121. And a lot of that is governed by staffing or weather conditions, because if it's a rainy month and we're not really able to ride, we just can't make those kind of business contacts. But if it's a chance where we... The weather permits us to ride a lot or we have enough staffing to ride, like, for instance, we generally won't do a bicycle patrol unless there's at least three officers working the shift, because if there's only two, we really can't do that, because if there's an emergency situation in an outlying area, we can't respond very timely manner. So something tells me in June 2019, we probably had either a lot of trainings or a lot of staffing issues where we just weren't able to ride the bike as much. For some reason, actually, probably the good reason is because of COVID, we didn't have so many trainings and meetings and that sort of thing. It allowed more officers to be on patrol staff, which allowed us to ride the bike more. So that's probably one of the main driving factors.
Well, I think it's an excellent service, and I commend you for that. Also, I was interested to see you had a lot of medical calls in June. It seemed more than usual. Do you attribute that to the COVID-19 virus or other issues? I was really struck by how much our police are supporting and responding to medical calls in this township.
Right. It... Nothing that was particularly COVID-related that I recall. We will assist on every ambulance call, whether it just be help lift someone up onto a stretcher or just to ensure the scene is safe for the ambulance folks when they get there. Should I be looking there to talk to her?
No, it's fine.
Or does she see me? Okay, all right. But we will respond to every ambulance call just to help the medics out. But I think another part, if there was an increase in the ambulance calls, it could be that more people are staying at home, not venturing out, and maybe they're more inclined to call the ambulance to them to check them out as far as going out in public. But it's about the usual gambit types of calls that we respond to. Anything from back pain to a CPR call is what we'll go to.
Yeah, so whenever dispatch sends an ambulance, they call us also. And so we're dispatched with every ambulance call.
And finally, I was... I had to smile at some of the animal responses. A cat up a tree, that's a real Norman Rockwell moment, but...
Yeah, I had that one. I actually called the...
Tigers and bears, oh my. You had deer and ducks and bears and cats and dogs, oh my.
I have, yeah, I have dealt with everything from bats and kangaroos to dogs on roofs. So, but I had the cat in a tree, and that's the first one I've ever had, and I thought, I should call the fire department for this. And they said, no, they say you never see a cat skeleton in a tree, so the cat will come down.
Well, well done. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Any... Thank you, Officer...
Matt Chapenko.
Officer Matt Chapenko. Thank you so much. Any other comments?
Pam had a question.
Oh, Pam. Sorry about that. Yes. You're on.
Great. I just have a comment. There, in your police report, there was a fire, kitchen fire, and it was in our neighborhood. And I just want to thank the officers that were first on the scene. This could have been really bad. I want to truly thank the officers at the fire department. I want to thank them also for their quick response to this kitchen fire, which could have been much worse. So thank you to the officers who were there and put out the fire and to our fire department who kept everything under control. So thank you.
Duly noted. I'll pass the word along. Thank you.
Is that the one Brad responded to?
I know I had one on Galen at the beginning of the month, and Brad put out one, too, on AmbulWinder Galen, I think.
Great. Any other comments? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for all you do.
Oh, it's an honor. I think, Doug, did you want me to go over the...
No, I'll take... I'll do that.
Okay. You want me to sit down and be available then?
Yeah, if you could, just stick around for a little bit.
So I guess we're gonna turn the mic over to Doug Erickson, who's gonna talk about the process that the police department has been going through over the last several months, hiring for one vacancy and a second vacancy medium length.
Yeah, we started off the year thinking we were gonna hire two people this year, but with COVID, we've put off filling the new spot that was added to the department this year. But we do have one retirement coming up in December, so we will... We went through our testing procedure to get to a list to fill that. I can either read or wear my mask. I can't do both. As noted in the agenda, there were 52 applicants who took the written test. We interviewed, I think, 20 then in May, and 13 of those met the standard, met all the standards that would qualify them for potentially, for potential spot. All those applicants were scored both on their written test and on the oral exam and on the list of... Pull up the list. We provide a list of the top scores in there, of those that qualified or the top, you know, we, all 13, were listed there. At this point, the police chief and the manager recommend that an offer of employment be made to Mr. Brian Staley, who ended up on the top of the list. And if you'd like, we can go into more discussion about what happens after an offer is made, if you'd like. At this point, the recommendation is to approve the list. This would be in effect for at least for the next three years. Then we'd work down as we had openings, we'd work down through that list to fill spots.
So I was gonna say, before we take any comments from the board, I wanted to make a little comment, and then we'll open it up. Because I had a talk with Doug Erickson this afternoon about this. As we all know, the process by which we select our police officers, the process by which we ask them to behave, their policies, has been under the microscope across the country. And in June, this township had two working group meetings with Officer... With Chief Jolly and with the board, and many citizens participated in that. One of the items that we discussed at that time, for example, was the interviewing board that conducted the interview part of the application process for these 13 people who appear on this list. And there was a discussion about making that interview board more representative of the community. I believe that there are five men on the board, five white males, having some gender, some ethnicity, some race diversity on there. That my feeling right now, and it can differ from board members, is that this is a process that went forward, it was transparent, it was done with, in earnest. And for us to go back through and do the heavy process again or to ask to relook at the applicants would perhaps not be appropriate this time. That is my opinion, and I welcome any comments concerning that or concerning the recommendation of Brian Staley or, and then again, the motion to accept all 13 applicants. So with those comments, I'll now open it up to board. I saw Elliot's hand first, so... Yes.
I was going to move the motion.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Great.
So we can go directly to discussion.
Okay. And now, any comments from the board? I can't.
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Pam has a comment.
Both Pam has a comment.
I would go, yes, I can agree with your proposal, Betsy, to move ahead with the top-ranked thing. I would like, however, for us to have maybe a work session or a discussion that the community could better understand both the process that was undertaken, you know, how, what the oral exams questions were, were they required by the state? Was there discretionary? Not to cast any dispersion on the people who were doing the interviewing, but I really have some questions for transparency of the process. And I'd like us also to revisit going forward for the next police officer who's hired to have, to look at a structure where the community is, has more community representatives on the interview panel that speak to diversity, not just in gender and race, but in interests that the police department is dealing with every day on the beat, the mental health issues, the domestic violence, to have some more citizens as we build. And I know the police department's been doing every effort it can for transparency, and we certainly acknowledge that they are doing the best practices that are the standards of police departments today. But we also know nationally and statewide that things are moving very fast. Governor Wolf just yesterday approved legislation for two different police reforms to go into effect. And I, you know, commend Police Chief Jolly and all the police department. Every day, they are dealing with a new regulatory environment. But I would like to see our supervisors have a discussion that is open to the public to understand better all of the steps that go into the selection of a police officer to reassure the community of the fair and balanced process that it is.
Right, and that we will...
But in terms of this motion, I would agree with approving the first person on the list.
Oh, okay. And I will note that the next item in our agenda is, we'll be addressing that specifically. Because Chief Jolly is not present, we will be proposing that, in fact, we have another working meeting in early August. So, yes. And I think Pam Robb had her hand up, and then I'll go to... Did you, Pam?
Yes, I did. I just am delighted to see the candidates and how many females that are on the top of this list, especially the first one. Maybe Duncan answered, or we can, and we can talk about this, how, although we chose the first one, who is next to be hired? Is it the second person on the list?
Yes. Yeah. When, if there was a next opening that comes up, we would go to Ms. Foreman, who's the second person on the list for the next one.
Great.
Well, let me back up. I don't think it... There is a veterans' preference that gets applied. So if any of the top three people on the list have, are a veteran, they would move to the top of the list. My understanding, at least out of the first three, there aren't any veterans, and I don't believe number four is either, but that list of three, then, you know, when we got to the second one, we'd look at the next three to see if there was a veteran. That's a state law that we have to provide a veterans' preference of some sort, and that's the practice we've done. And I, you know, the process we use, we think, is fair and objective, or as objective as we can make it. Can it be better? I think, yes. I think there's opportunities that we can look at. You know, well, we need to talk to some labor attorneys to make sure we're doing everything correctly. But, you know, there are probably opportunities to do things better than we have. And definitely getting more representation on the oral board would be an easy start.
Well, I appreciate it, Doug, because I'm looking at the top 10. It has so many females on that list. I am thrilled. I am really thrilled. I know each of these candidates are outstanding out of the 13, and the scores show that.
Yeah, it's nice when you interview 20 folks or so and you get, you know, you think, boy, I could pick, you know, probably 10 or 15 of, one of these 10 or 15, and they'd all do a good job. And all we have to do now is pick the best out of all these really good applicants. Now, we've had years where we've had a list of three, and that was it. So it's... It just varies from time to time. But I think, you know, we'll put this on a list of things to talk about at the next work session. And, you know, one of the things we could do is we could redo the process again next year. But I, you know, at this point, I would say let's move forward with what we have from the time being.
Thank you so much, Doug. Could you...
I know Elliot had a comment he wanted to make at this point.
Just if we have any kind of an oversight board or a board that looks over police matters, I think at least one officer should be on the committee, at least.
I don't... Do we have an oversight board?
No, we don't have an oversight board. If there was one, it would be you.
Okay. Well, I know the borough...
It's me and then you.
And the borough's actually working on one, but that would be separate from...
Yeah. And if you're talking about the interview board, yeah, I think, you know, the chief would always be on the panel and then beyond that.
I just want to make sure that anytime we have a discussion about it, everyone involved should have a role to play in it.
And we'll just put this on the agenda for our working meeting, probably the first week in August.
Yeah.
Is that...
One more question, if I might?
Okay, yes. Anita.
Doug, on the total score ranking, could you... Is that an average of the written score and the oral score? How is the total score arrived at? What does that total score...
Well, half of the score comes from the written exam. So it's out of 100. The written exam is out of 100, so whatever they scored there. And then the oral exam, there is 100 points. There's five, there's five interviewers for the oral. Each one scores each candidate between 0 and 100. And then for the or... Those five oral exam scores are averaged, and then it's the average between that and the written score. Does that make sense?
So the oral exam score is based on the assessment by the interview selection committee?
Yes, and that counts 50% of the score.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? And we have a motion on the floor. The motion, I believe, is just to approve the hiring or the offer, making an offer to...
Well, it would be to approve this list for now.
And to approve the list. That's what I wanted to...
And make the offer to the top.
So offer to the top and approval of the top 13 on the list, or the 13 who are on the list who happen to be in the top. So those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and we'll move on to the next item under public safety, which is continued review of police department policies. So last, at our working sessions held in June... So last, at our working sessions held in June, and then early July, Chief Jolly provided the board with an overview specifically with the use of force, and then the deadly, use of deadly force, and also some, went over some of the hiring practices and procedures. At the same time, resident Ben Jones brought up several points that the use of deadly force policy cites a standard set by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which is not as stringent as he believes it could be, he's about to make a recommendation, and he also talked about bans on no-knock warrants, and the issue of procuring equipment from the military. So at this point, we'll call Mr. Jones up to the mic, and if you introduce yourself again, to make sure everybody gets that.
Just a second, I'm working on getting your PowerPoint up.
Okay.
Well, hello, my name's Ben Jones, I'm a resident here in Patton Township, and thank you for the opportunity to present.
Hmm, just a second. I might need help, I want to find her. I can't see it on there.
Ben, while we're waiting, if you could also summarize your professional connections, and your-
Sure, yeah.
Your areas, areas of expertise and interest.
Sure, I, I work at the university here in State College. I ethicist, and one of the areas of interest is policing. We had a conference on the ethics of policing a few years back, so that sort of prompted my interest in the topic, and, but obviously, just here as a private citizen who's-
Thank you.
-here in the township.
Yep.
So, I'm just going to give an overview of sort of, of the proposals that I, that I suggested, and then, most of the discussion we spent on the deadly force policy, because I think that's the, the most complex one. So the first is, the first suggestion is an ordinance to ban no-knock warrants.
I didn't advance, but, okay.
That one? Okay, thank you.
There's a pointer on there, if you need that, too.
Sure, appreciate it. So obviously, no-knock warrants have been in the news with the killing earlier this year of Breonna Taylor in Louisville, Kentucky. And I think more and more folks are coming to the conclusion that this particular tactic is inherently dangerous to bystanders, to suspects, and officers themselves. I would make the case that they're not necessary. You have several states that don't, that have a ban on no-knock warrants, Oregon and Florida, and you also have some cities that have moved forward with, with banning them, like Louisville. One reason I, in particular, I made this proposal, is the Leadership Conference on Civil and Human Rights, which is a collection of, I think, around two hundred different civil rights and human rights organizations. They put forward several, a number of police reforms following the killing of George Floyd. This was one of them. And so I think, you know, one way locally to show our support for that is to put in place a local ban on them. The second is on procuring military equipment by the police. There has been some research out there that acquiring military equipment is associated with higher levels of police violence, can also undermine trust in the community if, if the police are militarized. This is also a proposal made by the Leadership Conference on Civil and Human Rights. Now, I should say, for both of these first two proposals, I think they are more or less de facto policies here locally, in terms of, you know, the police aren't, haven't been ordering any tanks lately, and haven't been carrying out no-knock warrants. But I do think it's, it's nonetheless important to, to have these policies in place going forward. There are a number of small communities around the country, not like, not that much different than ourselves, where news will come out that, you know, an armored vehicle or something has been acquired. And I think the no-knock warrants is, is especially important. I think if you asked people at the beginning of next, of last year, would there have been an incident like the killing of Osazi Osagi, I think that would have, you know, shocked people. But I think putting in place these sorts of policies are safeguards, that we don't have tragedies like the ones that we've seen across the country happen here in, in Patton Township. So I'll move on to the ordinance for a new deadly force policy, and I think this one requires the most discussion. So the current policy in place is based on Pennsylvania state law, and that's very understandable why, why the department would have that in place. I don't attribute any ill intent to the department. But there are questions around Pennsylvania state law on deadly force. So it was written in the nineteen seventies, this particular law. And in the law, which actually, there's, there's the law right now, which is the policy that's, that's in place, what's particularly problematic is the second part here. And so, basically, what the first part of the law says, if someone poses an imminent threat of death or serious bodily injury, police are authorized to use deadly force. But then there's a second provision, basically, as pertains to fleeing felons. And this particular section here, it has a number of provisions where deadly force should be authorized, even if the fleeing felon doesn't present, even if deadly force against the felon is not necessary to prevent death or bodily injury. And so this has actually come under a fair bit of scrutiny here in Pennsylvania. The District Attorney's Office in Philadelphia has, has argued that the law, the language of the law is, is unconstitutional, or at least should be rewritten in a way that's constitutional and in line with federal standards. So if I go back to the previous slide here, so this law was written in the nineteen seventies, notably in the nineteen eighties, you had some significant U.S. Supreme Court decisions that raised the bar in terms of when deadly force could be justified by police, such as Tennessee v. Gardner. And, as I mentioned, many legal experts don't believe that the Pennsylvania statute meets that. The Police Executive Research Forum, which will be doing a training later this summer that I believe the, the local department will participate in, one of the things that they have called for is for local agencies to put in place policies that go beyond the minimum required by state and federal law. Here in Pennsylvania, the Legislative Black Caucus has put forward a proposal for a more stringent deadly force policy here in the state. That has not passed, but we, as a, as a local government, can put in place policies to guide the police that go beyond what the current state law is, and we could actually put one in place that matches what the Legislative Black Caucus has proposed. And specifically, what the caucus has proposed is basically limiting, limiting the justification for deadly force only against someone who presents an imminent threat of death or serious bodily injury or rape. Oops, wrong way. So I have some slides here, I'm not going to read all these quotes, but these are just some examples of different legal experts raising questions about the current state statute. This is a quote from Assistant District Attorney in Philadelphia, raising questions about the current statute. This is a book that recently came out on police use of force, written by several experts on the topic. Seth Stodden is a, he's a law professor, a former law enforcement officer, Jeffrey Noble is a, a former police chief, and Jeffrey Albert is a leading criminologist. And they basically looked at all the deadly, police deadly force statutes around the country, and what they identified were a number that fell short of the standard in Gardner, and Pennsylvania was one of the laws that they, they identified in that category. And this is, other, these are legal experts here in Pennsylvania, criminologist, and, and someone who worked in the Attorney's General's office, also raising concerns about the current language in the Pennsylvania statute. So to, just to lay it out here, so Gardner was the decision in nineteen eighty-five, and what Gardner did was, it said that the fleeing felon rule was unconstitutional. And the fleeing felon rule, basically, if anyone, if you had a felon who was fleeing, and the only way to stop them was lethal force, then police were justified in using that force, regardless of whether they were a danger to anyone, regardless of how serious the felony was. And so in nineteen eighty-five, Gardner said, the Supreme Court said, that's unconstitutional, that violates the Fourth Amendment prohibition on unreasonable seizures. As I mentioned, a lot of legal experts think the Pennsylvania law falls somewhere between the fleeing felon rule and Gardner. But the Pennsylvania law says, is that one, one way you could be liable to deadly force is if you're, you committed a forcible fleeing felony. But again, that could be a robbery, that counts as a forcible felony, and if someone robs a gas station, is running away, doesn't present an imminent danger, is that an instance where we want police to use deadly force? And I think the answer would be no, including the law enforcement that work here locally. Now, I shared with the board some examples of different policies from around the country that go beyond what Gardner requires. So Philadelphia, a department here in the state, they don't list the Pennsylvania state law when they put forward their deadly force statute. So it's not necessary to have the Pennsylvania law in place, you can go beyond it. The D.C., the policy used by the Metropolitan Police in D.C. also goes beyond what Gardner requires. So would HB sixteen sixty-four, which is what was proposed by the Legislative Black Caucus. And then, what I basically did, I shared with the Board of Supervisors a model policy. It sort of draws from these different ones, different best practices, uses the standard proposed by the Legislative Black Caucus. And this is a summary of what's in that model policy. So, basically, it would, it would limit the justification of deadly force to defense of life against an imminent threat, that's what the, the legislation by the Black Caucus proposes. It'd also require the exhaustion of other permissible non-lethal options, if they're feasible in the situation. That's a recommendation made by the Police Executive Research Forum, and found in other policies. It would require verbal warning, warning if feasible, that's in the Philadelphia policy. It would prohibit deadly force against those who are only a danger to themselves. So if someone's suicidal, they're not posing a danger to anyone, lethal force would be prohibited there. That's another recommendation by the Police Executive Research Forum. And also prohibiting tactics that unnecessarily precipitate deadly force. And that's found in the Philadelphia policy. So in conclusion, I would just say, I hope that the reforms suggested here are not seen as attack on our local police department. I think the local police department has taken a number of steps that deserve praise. They include instituting body cameras well before many other local departments, having in place all of Campaign Zero's eight can't wait recommendations, planning to participate in use of force training by the Police Executive Research Forum, not using outdated, outdated tactics like the twenty-one-foot rule, which some other local departments still teach, getting accreditation from the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, which also some local departments still lack. I think our township can continue to be a leader by passing the reforms presented today. In assembling these proposals, I specifically looked to what leading, leading civil rights organizations have been calling for, based on research into best police practices. After the horrific killing of George Floyd, Chief Jolly and the township made clear that police brutality and racially biased policing have no place in our community. To build on those important statements, you now can show residents that you are responding to their concerns in a very concrete way, by ensuring that local policy reflects the recommendations made by leading civil rights organizations after Mr. Floyd's death. I fully understand that the challenges that face policing are complex, and the proposals today will not solve them all. In particular, much work remains on the issue of mental health, and how police interact with those, with mental illness. I look forward to the recommendations by the State College Center County Mental Health Task Force, and hopefully, it can offer a roadmap to better ensure the safety of vulnerable members of our community. But though the proposals laid out here won't solve all the challenges related to policing, they are important steps forward to help guard against tragedies involving police violence, that occur with disturbing regularity across the U.S., and too often destroy black lives. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors to move forward with the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thorough and, and well-researched presentation. It is of an added value to this board to have that resource available to us. At this point, I'm actually conflicted, I would normally, or I will open it up for more comments, but I'm also a little bit conflicted because Chief Jolly is not in the audience. And as much as I know it's our decision, I know we all value his perspective. So I would first like to get feedback from the board on the fact that Chief Jolly is not here, and I am not one to, want to postpone something that I think is very pertinent. But on the other hand, I do want to be inclusionary, and I believe we do have an excellent chief, as you have many times alluded to, policies that he's implemented. So, comments from the board about whether we should proceed with a vote tonight, or how, and/or how you feel about Chief Jolly not being present? And I can't see, yeah, Dan, and I can't see people on the screen, so.
Anita, everybody's got a comment at this point, so.
Okay, so I'll start with Dan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. I really am grateful for the amount of energy you've put into providing all this information for us, and certainly am supportive of considering resolutions as you've proposed. But I do agree with Betsy that we need to have Chief Jolly involved in our discussion. So I don't see a problem with postponing a discuss, a serious discussion about adopting resolution until August. Now, maybe we should have a second, or a third work session, to have that discussion, knowing that we're not going to pass anything in a work session, but maybe we can develop a resolution, or, or make some-
A plan.
Make some plans of what we're going to do in, in a regular board meeting in August.
And that would expedite board meeting. Yes, I, we also value not just your energy and thoughts, but your time, and I, I'm not one to encourage repeat performances if not necessary. But let's, how about if we just go down the row, go to Elliot, Mr. Abrams?
I think we should wait until the chief is here-
Okay.
-before actually passing anything. But I think one thing that should be added, that's missing, is a commitment that we're not in a group that wants to defund the police. I think if anything, we might want to spend more on mental health issues. But, like, you see that commercial on TV where they have this police department just shut down, and they'll respond to you within five days? I don't even want people to guess that that's something that we're thinking about doing.
Okay, and I'm, yeah, I'm certainly not. And I'll go down to Anita Tease, and then to Pam Robb. Anita, do you want to weigh in on either-
Yes, get myself unmuted here. Yes, I am leaning to support everything that Mr. Jones has suggested. I agree a work session would be helpful, I think we do need to hear from the chief. But I would hope that it could be scheduled, I guess we can't schedule another official board meeting between, after the work session, but before that August-
I will, I will echo Doug's words, we can do anything we want. Or I anticipate-
As long as it's legal, yeah.
My stance, and I, Chief Jolly, in my perception, has been very much at the front of the, the movement to embrace inclusive and important regulations and changes. I won't speak for him, but I would look very much forward to his reaction and perspective on this. But I would hope that if he is in favor of proceeding in these ways, that we could then schedule the process, because I think, will there be public hearings if we propose an ordinance? I mean, it's not a done deal, just to, to vote it in a session. Would there not also be, I, I'd like to get the process moving as expeditiously as possible, but I agree we should wait for Chief Jolly, who, I believe, deserves the wonderful time off this week that, that he deserved, and so, but I think we should wait for his input, yes.
Thank you. Do you want to tie that to the-
Yeah, and we could, we could talk about process at the next meeting, you know, the easiest way would be to- You know, the easiest way would be to adopt a resolution which would set policy, not necessarily need to do an ordinance. An ordinance is something where we want somebody in the public to do something or not do something. When we're talking about our own employees, we can do that via resolution and policymaking. So, but we can talk about that, too. I mean, ordinances are harder to undo, too. So if you want, you know, that, that might be a consideration if you wanted to do an ordinance. It takes another ordinance to undo it. So, but we can talk about those. That may be part, that would probably be part of the next, the work session.
Work session, right. And I think, and then last, but by no ways least, Pam Rom.
Thank you. I just want to thank Mr. Jones for his effortless effort in putting this presentation together, and his, his information is just outstanding. I, I'm really learning a lot as well. I, I agree with you, Betsy, to wait on chief before making a decision. And to Elliot, when he mentioned defunding, not defunding the police, we have an outstanding police department. So that is the furthest thing, I think, from our community to think anything like that. Moving forward, I look forward to our work session and moving this resolution forward. Time is of the essence to continue doing the right thing. So thank Mr. Jones, thank this outstanding board. Our board is outstanding on our issues. Doug, to your staff, thank them also for all the hard work that they do. So as we move forward, I look forward to a new day, a new change, and new, a new opening to this, this subject of change for the better. So I thank you for this time.
Thank you. So Doug.
For the record, want to report that we, we have received, I think, eight emails from residents of the township, all in support of Mr. Jones's proposals. Plus, we had a phone call earlier from Mr. Jim Payne, also wanted to record that he, again, favors Mr. Jones's proposals.
Right. And I wanted to read the names of those people to recognize, just to our community, those who are in favor of the three proposals that Mr. Jones has proposed. That would be Caitlin Hodges, Mara Cloutier, Sam Black, Mackenzie Jones, Jesse Starks, Kathy Andrews, Pat Cunable, I hope I'm saying that right, Stephen Cunable, and then, of course, lastly, Jim Payne, who called in. So thank you to all of you who wrote in with opinions and comments. So I believe that we will now call in Mr. Elliot.
No, I just wanted to thank you again for doing this research. It's rare that we actually get a complete research item on something that helps us do our job better. And it's much appreciated. Anyone else who wants to do that on any other topic, send it in.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to share.
Yeah, for sure.
So I'll, I'll reach out and we'll get that work session scheduled.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. That was excellent. Much appreciated. Let's see. Oh, yes, now we need to look at the fee proposal for requests of copies of police documents. And it looks to me like this is sort of a pro forma that, we set this in place a year ago, where we set a fee structure of charging $75 per hour for producing copies of video footage, should anyone from the public want that. And we've asked to have a review of that a year later. It's noted that we only had one request for footage, and that footage didn't happen to exist, so we don't really know, you know, whether that was appropriate or not. But our concern at the time a year ago was that the cost that we set not only be cost effective for our department, our bottom line budget, but that it not be prohibitive to a member of the public who is seeking information. So we were trying to balance that. And it looks like we are just going to recommend that we review the issue again a year from now.
Correct.
Okay. So any comments? Should we make it 75, 25? No, I'm just, okay, so we'll just look at it in a year. I think we're now on to Public Works, and we're having a presentation on the annual stormwater, we're having the annual presentation on stormwater updates, and this will be by our engineer, Mr. Casson.
Yep. So Steve, if you want to go ahead and launch from your end.
Oh, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay. What's stormwater?
Pardon, I can't.
What is stormwater? I haven't seen any rain recently.
There you go. Looks good, Steve.
Yep. So this is your annual education and update, and I kind of delve a little back into essentially some sort of background for the two new members. I haven't done that in a while. So, you know, so the outline generally, you're going to cover a little general stormwater rainfall, go back into what our MS4 permit is, then talk about the activities we've done over the last year, and then our new permit sort of highlights some of the differences, and then future actions related to the permit. So, I mean, humans and water obviously are in a strictly linked. Water is vital to our health and well-being. And as we've, as we've developed our surrounding over the years, you know, so too we've, stormwater and flooding management is also vital to our health and prosperity. So, you know, stormwater, we think of stormwater, stormwater runoff as an urban problem, but it does happen in the, that's part of the natural water cycle. But it doesn't get infiltrated into the soil and the bedrock to then further essentially go down to the streams and provide for flow to those, especially in drier weather. That's sort of where the infiltration of, you know, the urban area, actually, so there's less infiltration, and then therefore there are some streams that sort of dry up and don't run during dry weather, or sometimes don't run, other than when it's raining out. So there's graphically, I just wanted to show you this. So it's sort of, the blue line is this pre-development flows, and then the green line is showing where you add the impervious area and you get a much higher peak flow. And also, this is, this between, the area between the green and the blue line is where your stormwater designers have to either detain or retain and infiltrate the stormwater to get them back to essentially the, below the pre-development flow or equal to that. That's a requirement of the DEP in just about every state and the EPA. So the center region is a little different. We have, are underlaid by a lot of limestone and essentially a karst, what they call karst formation. So it's limestone dolomite, and so it's easily very porous, and it's also prone to evolving with the, with the water over time, geologic time, not necessarily human time. So you have, you know, sinkholes and some streams actually that never make it beyond the sinkhole or what we call a sinking stream. The Big Hollow would be one of those that rarely makes it to Spring Creek. So runoff can be a problem. Obviously, it's fairly simple, so the volume of runoff is greater than the infiltration or the capacity of the conveyance. So even these natural sinkholes and everything do have a capacity that can be overwhelmed, so such as this right out near the arboretum. And so obviously, the problem, pollutants are transported to the streams, and especially from the impervious surfaces. So you also get a lot of, as you can see by these two pictures, a lot of sediment transport with rainfall and runoff. So in other words, so in our region, stormwater, in the township, stormwater does not go to the treatment plant, it goes directly to the stream, like from your catch basin to the storm sewer network, and eventually out to the stream, out to the river. It's not, it's not, wait, no treatment at all to remove any of the pollutants. So how did we get here? Just a little background. So in 1972, the Clean Water Act was enacted, and this gave the EPA and sort of by default the DEP the authorization to enact the NPDS MS4 permit, which is sort of where we get our permit in the system. And then in 1983, the governors of Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Virginia signed the Chesapeake Bay Pollution Reduction, which was essentially a one-page paper at the time, but has since grown into a more formalized agreement with actual pollution reduction goals. So, you know, our permit is essentially NPDS, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, and a municipal separate storm sewer system permit. This, this type of permit actually targets just stormwater runoff from urbanized areas. I'll get to that in a second. We actually provide and submit an annual report to the DEP based on our, what we've done over the past year. And the Spring Creek Partners, which are the six municipalities and Penn State in the area, actually work collectively to fulfill some of the obligations under the permit. So just briefly, the urbanized area on the left is from 2000. That is what they, it's all based on the census. And then the current urbanized area, 2010, is on the right. So you can see it added in areas of Walker, Spring, and Belfont. And actually, Spring is now a member of the MS4 partners. So under, under the permit, we have to have a stormwater management program and must comply with the minimum control measures listed there. NCM-1 and NCM-2 are where we do a lot, where the partners do most of their collaboration with watershed cleanup day and supporting the rain barrel workshop, and also a lot of the ads and outreach to the public. And the rest of it is generally ours with the illicit discharge elimination. The ordinances is the post-construction stormwater management, and also the pollution prevention and good housekeeping, which are our operational measures. So over the, for this permit, or this permit renewal, we were required to do a pollution reduction plan, and the MS4 partners actually came up, went jointly with pollution reduction plan because we sort of overlap with the streams that we each affect. So basically, with this plan, the pollutants were modeled over the urbanized area, and then over this next five-year cycle, we're required to reduce those pollutants by this amount, 10% of sediment, 3% nitrogen, and 5% of phosphorus. So the DEP, assuming with EPA blessing, so if we actually meet the modeled reduction of sediment, the nitrogen and phosphorus will be assumed. So that's usually the way that all that is transported, is the nitrogen and phosphorus with the sediment. And so the partner of these, so we can combine on projects during this and as well as combine on the reduction. So we had to, part of the planning has to come up with a project, and our project, we have a stream bank stabilization project, which is unnamed tributary of the Buffalo Run that runs along Meeks Lane. I just call pictures here to sort of so that, you know, you can sort of see a little bit on the upper part of this where it's sort of eroding the back of the bank, the channel a little bit, but on the lower section, it's a little more obvious that sediment is just sort of being transported downstream. So that will be the stabilization project that will have to be done. So the highlights of this past year, we did receive the recent permit in June, so we took the final permit. We had an interesting time doing the rain barrel and watershed cleanup days with COVID-19. Most of those were done, we gave the rain, the rain barrels were given to the people to build at home, and as well as the educational materials that we usually provide, and we usually do a presentation for them. The other note would be with two non-compliance events, that essentially there was a little bit of a grease trap overflow at Mo's that they had taken care of, and then someone had spilled some, or had emptied, dumped some paint into one of the stormwater inlets on Westminster Court, and that the crew actually were pretty cracker jacket, cleaning that out and removing everything for that. And then obviously, crew training and this presentation. So the highlights of the new permit are, one of the big ones is we, we are required to report to the DEP what they call unanticipated non-compliance, which would be if someone spilled something, you know, a spill of some sort, or I guess, whatever you want to call that, someone did something bad and poured something into the drain. But it would, you know, so we will have to report that either on a immediate basis if it's a, some sort of toxic pollutant, or on a 24-hour basis, if it's pretty much anything else that will endanger the environment. The other, so we did get the, so the pollution reduction of the projects were extended from, they originally were 2022, so we now have till the end of the permit cycle of 2025 to complete the project. One of the others, some of the other things, compliance with private BMP owners, so we have, we're going to be required to generally police them a little bit and determine whether they're actually doing their job under their maintenance obligations for the BMPs. There's the model ordinance, we'll have to make sure our ordinance is in line with, and that'll be a change over the next five years. And then one of the others is to establish and promote a pollution reporting mechanism, which would be a see, click, fix, or perhaps a telephone number so that people can call in if they, obviously, if you look at the next line, if they see their, their neighbor washing their car with soap and, with soap or some sort of detergent, because that is, under this permit will no longer be an acceptable use. So you can wash your car, but you can't use soap. So obviously, that's sort of the highlights of that, and the future highlights would be, you know, we, you know, we send, try to send more information out to target audiences, and especially with the, the new, the new permit changes, and then probably there are some stormwater BMPs that we're not getting credit for necessarily because they were, you know, done long before that. So we're going to evaluate and see whether we can upgrade some of those to actually get credit for pollution reductions. And then obviously, HOA and the private BMP owners, educating them about what their maintenance obligation and responsibilities are, and then obviously beginning and doing the stream bank restoration project by 2025 is the final sort of highlight. And that's pretty much my report.
What is BMP?
Best Management Practice.
How can you be a best management practice owner?
Like a homeowners association that has a stormwater pond in their development.
Oh, okay.
They'd be responsible for it, yeah.
Okay.
So those are, yeah, those are BMPs that.
That sounded like a weird adjective. Okay, thank you.
All right, I should have, maybe I should.
No, you're, you're fine. In fact, I was, I thought you might have, and that I was a little embarrassed, so I was trying to ask Doug to decide.
No.
Okay, sorry, Steve, not you.
Nope.
If you want to take down your PowerPoint, Steve, and we can have, see if there's any questions.
So I, oh, yes, Dan, sorry.
Oh, Steve, you mentioned car wash, and.
Well, Steve, you mentioned car wash and detergent. How are commercial car wash businesses regulated? Because they certainly use detergent in their operation.
Yes. Well, they would, they would be, they would, they're, all their water, I mean, what they, they, some of them do, do a recycle, so they recycle some of the water and filter it onsite, but what they can't do, they actually then discharge to the treatment plant. So it's apparently very expensive to be a car wash and have a connection. I forget, I think one of the, it was a very crazy amount of money for them to connect to the treatment plant.
Yeah, they typically treat and recycle most of their water. What they do discharge and goes to the sanitary sewer instead of storm sewer.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a question? Let's see, oh, Elliot, yes.
I realize why the soap can't be used, and we use a car wash, but if you use plain water on your vehicle, you're going to have a calcium deposit as it dries.
Right.
So is there any, anything that's legal to use?
No, we'll have to get back to you on that.
At one point, I thought, hey, if you washed on grass and there was no runoff, have you got any more information on something like that, Steve?
No, they, they pretty much said that it was, without detergent, that was their language. But no matter whether it was on grass or not, that was...
Okay.
Okay.
So, not that we know of, but we'll do a little more checking.
Interesting.
I don't, yeah, you talking about something like a rinse agent or something, that would...
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll check into that. Pam's got her hand up.
I just got a question. Does the community know about no detergent on washing their cars?
Well, that's part of the education we get to do over the next, the next five years.
Exactly.
Yeah. Probably not widely known, but it'll be something we'll have to, we'll put in our newsletter when it goes out this fall. And then, as Steve had mentioned, the MS4 partners, they work with Clearwater, and we try to do several educational things throughout the year to get that information out. This is another one where the state wants us to do the dirty work, so.
So it...
Be a bad pun if it...
It begs the question, I don't, I don't see any other hands up, of whether we couldn't work with our two big box stores nearby, we've got many names, and then there's another little box store over in College Township, that's his hardware suppliers, and somehow partner with them. It seems to me like that's an active purchase point opportunity. Not that they have to do it, but they might be willing to help us out, help the, help the world out there. It's all about pH, that's, that's what it is. That's what the soap does, it makes it more basic, and it uses calcium, so I would think that there would be...
Also phosphorus.
Yes.
Detergent has a high phosphorus content.
That, that is true. But a lot of it, the soap, is about the pH, which is going to change the calcium deposit, so there's bound to be another product out there, and if there isn't, then...
There's a niche market for you.
There is a niche market coming up, you got it. Can we task the township to reaching out to Lowe's, Home Depot, and True Value?
Sure. We'll work with the partners and see, yeah.
Maybe the auto supply stores?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Elliot?
I never thought about this before, but when it was stated that a lot of these regulations started in 1972, I'm not sure what month they started, but in June of that year, we had one of the worst floods in Pennsylvania. We had a foot of rain here in a two or three-day period, and some of the standards that had been in place before that talked about 24-hour rainfall. And this storm lasted for 48 to 72 hours, and so it, it broke all the records, but there were no, there were no records for the, that length of storm.
Wow.
So a lot of things had to be changed.
Yeah. It's also somewhat recognized that early 70s was when the Cuyahoga River caught on fire also in, in Cleveland, is we, we probably really need to start doing something about water quality, so.
Yeah. Very interesting. Thank you, Steve, that's great.
Yep.
Okay, let's see, kind of pre-proposed public state and stormwater, and we're on to, oh, Circleville Traffic Calming Update in Alexander Cast...
Castropini.
Castropini. I'm going to have you go ahead and just take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Back in May, May 27th, I provided findings for speed and site distance analyses for Circleville Road between Christopher and Carrigan. So I proceeded with the traffic calming study. I reached out to our local LTAP representative, Mark Hood, over at Panone. We met on-site and talked about different options. Those options are presented in the agenda item 5B1 in, in this agenda. We went through, discussed speed humps, because that's always the first thing that comes to mind. And due to the 85th percentile speed being 48 miles an hour, he did not recommend speed humps for that, or any sort of vertical measure. So I'm proposing that we, we try speed reduction markings per his recommendation, and there is a, Doug has it up on the screen. So basically, these are markings that get progressively closer together to make you feel like you're going faster, and potentially slow you down when you're driving down the road. These are markings that our local, our road crew can implement, cost is $300 or less to put them in. So if you have any questions, I can answer them.
I have a question, but we had not heard of this before, when we were talking about Toftrees and, and the Presidential Drive intersection. This seems like a very inexpensive thing to try. I would be very interested in your follow-up after this painting is done, to see if there is a noticeable decrease in average speeds, and if there is, maybe we should do that in Toftrees as well.
Yeah.
At that problem intersection.
Yeah, we can look at it. We did, Alexandra, did you mention we, we did reach out to the neighborhood to see if they had any comments also?
I, yeah, you're, I forgot to mention that. We sent a letter out on June 26th to the neighborhood, and we received a comment letter back from George Chaplin, who initiated this whole process back in January. His letter is also part of the agenda items.
So nobody's saying no yet, so.
Yeah, he's, he's happy that we're doing something. I'm going to, like you said, Dan, I'm going to collect data after we implement, and we're hoping to see a reduction in speeds, so.
I have no idea, I have no idea if this is a factor, but when you have one of those, I, I like that idea of the converging lines, but does that fool bicycle riders and force them into the, into the road?
I don't think it will, because it's going to be, the white line is still going to be where it is, and bicycle riders probably typically ride to shoulder if possible.
Yeah. Well, we'll reach out to the bicycle folks after we do this, too. We'll talk more about some of the conversations we've had with the bicycle folks here with the next item, and we can, we can talk to them about this once we've done it, too. If the board has, no other comments, we'll...
I do.
Thank you. Please shout out, because I literally can't see the, very well the screen. Yeah, sorry about that. Anita?
Yes. I thought the letter by Ms. Castropini was superb to the residents, especially when she pointed out that this solution would not create any additional noise. I thought that was being very sensitive to the concerns of the residents, and just excellent work. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Miss Rob has her hand up.
Thank you, yes. God, you've got good eyes. I'm sorry.
Andrea, I just have one question. Has any of the, the other township had that same line, name that we're proposing?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that very...
No, nobody else has done this around here that we're aware of. It's, it's used by, in Virginia, so this is brand-new to us, too, so we don't like to be on the cutting edge usually, but we're going to try it this time, or the tip of the spear, which is always a very sharp point.
Yeah.
So...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll get the CDT to do an article on it, whatever, see how it works. Yeah, thanks. Great, great job. I love it. Cheap, elegant solution. Fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we just, if we can concur with the recommendations to install the Escher, I mean, the optical illusion, the MC Escher S bars, that's great.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and get that scheduled.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, I, I have one, actually, I have one question, and I'm assuming that we're going to assess that after the bars are painted.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a part of my letter to the residents, that I would be providing them with data after.
That's right. Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Okay. Pardon?
Do we need a motion?
I don't think we do, I think we just concur.
No, not unless you want to tell us to not do it, so.
Yeah. I think we concur. So now we're on to the Toftrees Corridor update, and Doug, I'll let you take that.
Alexandra's going to do this one also.
Oh, I'll let Alexandra take it.
So with Toftrees Corridor plans, we met back in December with the consultant Navarro to, to show the board the plans. We've been continually working with them throughout all these months. I met with several bike, like Doug had mentioned, Center Bike, CRBAC, and Patons RAC. I presented the plans to them to show them the proposed bicycle lane configuration, and the consensus that we got was to have dedicated lane from Waddle to Cricklewood, and then from Cricklewood to the station, it would be shared lane, meaning the bicyclists and motorists would share the lane. It would be a 15-foot wide lane. So Navarro is currently working on updating the plans. I'm told by next week I should see something, and they're updating the cost estimate. When I have that ready to present to you again, we'll be, we'll be doing, we'll be coming back to do another round of meetings, so you'll have the opportunity to do another, to do more input on the plan. We received this letter from Valerie Burnett on Tuesday regarding the plan, so that was a part of the agenda item 5C. So right now, this is for just information only. If you have any comments, I'm happy to talk about them.
Sure. Any comments? I'm looking at the screen. Do I see Anita or Pam? Any comments? No going ones? Okay, I'm going to take it down here. Any comments? Elliot, yes.
In the, I forget what the neighborhood group is.
Homeowner group?
Homeowner, but the wrote, the letter that was written in there looked excellent. I just wondered if anyone else added to it.
Well, I'm sorry, I missed your comment, Elliot. You asked something about the homeowners association, and you wondered if anyone had...
It's the, it's the thing that we, that you just joined recently, where...
Oh, Nextdoor?
Yeah, Nextdoor.
Oh, Nextdoor.
And she, and the letter was in there, and I was just curious if, I haven't seen too many people.
Yeah, no, when we reach out, like I said, when we get the plans back and we get another chance to check through and make sure they're what we want, we'll do some more, we'll do more public outreach, and that's a good idea to, we can announce that over Nextdoor, too, and get people, if there's an active group, there's two or three active groups in the Toftrees area that we can get, get input from. And we, yeah, we haven't figured, we haven't determined how all we're going to do public outreach, but we'll, we'll do that, and work that out here after we see what the plans are, and then probably come back in August and give you another update, let you look at the plans, too.
And there are homeowners association...
Yes.
Associations in Toftrees.
Yeah, we'll work with them and, and all the apartment complexes there along there also.
Okay. Dan?
I have a question, Doug. One of the things Ms. Burnett mentioned in her letter was that the Belfont Rail Trail is now much more crowded than it used to be, which you would expect during this pandemic crisis, a lot more people take advantage of those outdoor opportunities. But we have nothing to do with that rail trail.
No, well, actually, we, we own, we have easements over parts of it, and we're actually working on, staff's been working on putting together the rest of the, the, trying to work with all the property owners to at least get the trail surveyed and get easement documents drawn up and start discussions with them. So, okay.
And at some point, there was discussion about congestion at the parking area, not enough parking area to travel.
Well, there really isn't a parking area there, so.
Oh, right.
So I, I don't know, we, you know, we don't really need to, yeah, I can't remember exactly, but the park, yeah, there really isn't a park, a designated parking area there. There's tuck, there's room to pull off, but it's not anything we'd encourage people to do at this point. Now, from Toftrees on to, from Toftrees Avenue North or Northwest, we have an easement over that that we got at the end of 2017 as part of our open space. There's a little bit of trail easement we need to get on the other end, on the far end of Toftrees, and I'm currently working on that, too, to get that, get an appraisal done on that, so I can reach out to the homeowners and see if they're willing to talk about that, so, or not homeowners, property owners.
At the Cedar Cliff?
Yeah, yeah. There's one property between Toftrees and the Cedar Cliff folks that we need, we'll have to deal with, so.
And I, and I think that one, the segment that you referred to just a few minutes ago was under the, the aegis of the Open Space Stewardship Committee. I think we talked about that.
Yeah, that came in. So, yeah, and then, in the rest of Toftrees, there's two or three different owners that we're trying to...
Yeah.
One's the resort, and the others are the apartment owners, so all those different pieces are at different points in the process of...
Okay, cool.
Trying to see what it's going to cost to acquire all that.
Exciting. Anything else? I have a comment, unless anybody else has a comment on that. So as a former cyclist, but not a, what I would call a competing cyclist, I certainly appreciated any bicycle lane. And I'm, what I'm getting at here are sort of not, these non-professional riders, kids, families, and I know down at the one end of Toftrees, where the intersection of Beaumont and Presidential Drive and Toftrees Avenue, there are a lot of, there's some kids there. So I just noted what Valerie Burnett put in her comments, was she envisioned having dedicated bike lanes up and down all of Toftrees Avenue. I don't know whether that would entail a widening of the road between that area, between Cricklewood and the rest, but I just throw that out there, because the, the bike groups, they certainly come with a lot of knowledge, but it's a different population than families riding out there. And if there were kids who wanted to ride from Toftrees to the Texas Roadhouse, for example, so that's about it.
Well, you know, if the plans are ready, we'll, we'll have that discussion.
Sounds great, thank you. So I guess we can move on to the Planning Commission report, and I think we...
There he is, Mr. Schmidt.
Schmidt, okay, welcome.
Yes, hi there, thank you. And for the board members that I don't know, welcome to the board. We met on July 6th, and our main focus was to talk about how to try to move forward with some type of affordable housing within the township. We talked about a couple poll questions that we were asked at the meeting, the first of which was if we should offer a density bonus, and we were all in agreement that we think that we should. However, we urged Nicole to just ask her how this has worked in some other town... However, we urged Nicole to just ask her how this has worked in some other townships throughout the center region. The next question that we were asked was in regards to the. Which C2 properties should allow the MXB to overlay? And we felt that most of the properties should, but we're still looking for that point forward. Those were the two, those were the two main agenda items that we discussed at our July 6 meeting. And I would assume that we're going to continue to explore that going forward next month. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about anything that I went over in regard to those two areas.
Any hands up? Any questions? Thank you for all your work as usual on affordable housing and everything else you do.
Yes, thank you. And I hope that you all stay well and healthy and safe.
You too. Thanks, Richard. So I think this brings us to administration. And Doug, you want to take this one?
Yeah.
Capital Improvement Plan.
We are, again, staff will start, well, I've, we've actually probably, in our own way, started working on, on things that we need to start doing next in 2021 to 2025. So this is one of our main lookaheads in our financial planning for the township. This is the opportunity to talk about big things, things that might not come about for two or three or four years. This is where we start testing those ideas, seeing if they're feasible, seeing if they're affordable, and where they might end up in, in the grand scheme of things. So if you have ideas of things that you want to throw on that list. There's no. Not sure where that's coming from. There's, there's no bad ideas. What will happen is everything that gets mentioned will go on the first list. And what we're looking at at the end of the day is for each of these next five years, if we put everything in there, do we have enough revenue to support all these things in the next five years? Man.
Betsy's not muted.
Pardon?
Betsy's not muted.
No.
I'm not muted? Oh, no, no.
She back up now?
I just got back on, sorry.
Oh, okay.
You're right. I keep getting on it.
I'm not muted?
And now I'm on.
I just got back on, sorry.
Took it long enough. Okay. So if there's anything you'd like to, like to talk about, you can throw it out here. Or if you'd like to talk to me about it before you make it public, we can do that too. We'll come back at least one more time in August and see if you have any ideas. And then staff will start working more earnestly, earnestly here in September. And we'll bring you the final, we'll bring you the report back in October is usually when we roll out the CIP. And then we go into budget in November and all the other fun stuff we do in December. So with that, I'll look to see if there's any comments or questions.
Anybody?
Ideas or?
Anybody have any big ideas they want to throw out tonight?
Doug.
Anita, thank you.
Yes. I know in my sitting on the Park Capital Committee, that it seems a lot of the Park District projects are very much tied or motivated or funded by grant proposals. And I guess the question would be looking at trends in township projects or township visionings as you go forward. Are there certain areas, Doug, that are viewed among township administrators as opportunities that could be funded with grants? Not that the grant should drive the project, but it might open up ideas that we would not think of just within our local township.
I mean, we, we apply for a lot of those park grants also. So for the Burnell Road Park, we recently applied for a grant out, out there for the next, next improvement. I think you'll see a lot of push in bikeways in the next few years. There's two or three different pots of money that we can look at there. And we're looking at some opportunities for the Toftrees Corridor right now also. That's, you know, once we get a little bit further on with the work that Navarro and Wright and Alexandra are doing, I think there will be some opportunities to apply for, for some grant funding for that corridor also. Beyond that now, you know, usually the grants are fairly competitive. With Toftrees, we may end up doing something cooperatively with the folks who want to do the, the development on the Toftrees West, where they remove the trees. So that may augment that grant opportunity too. Those are the things, those are the places, I mean, that, most of those things are already in the CIP in one form or another. So I don't think, the latest thing that I think we need to add is we got a request for better access to Green Hollow Park, as in ADA access. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to address that in the next year or so. So that'll be a new project that we'll be looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Another one is, we've been talking to planning committees, came out of planning commission. But Nicole Pollack, the planner, and I have been talking with Penn State to see how we can get a bikeway from the Planted Airport District into Toftrees. And we've been making a little bit of progress with that. So that'll be another bikeway project that we'll be looking at. You know, probably maybe doing some right-of-way acquisition in the next year or two. And then construction's probably three or four years out. So, yeah, part of my job is to think five, 10 years out. This, the CIP is one of the best tools that we have to start doing that, so.
Great. See, that's exciting thought. Exciting mindset. Oh, very interesting, the communication survey results. I was fascinated.
Yeah. I put it out there. And I think one of the things I realized is it's kind of a self-fulfilling survey. Because when you send the survey out by email and through social media, most of the people that respond back say you should do it by email and social media. So I, I, my take from it is we need to continue doing the things we've been doing. And my question is, we probably need to do some more outreach. And ideas I jotted down was at least put something in the fall newsletter that goes out to everybody to see if that would generate. I don't know if we want to do a direct mail, but that's an option also that we can talk about. I was going to.
Did we do anything through social media?
We did.
But did we post the survey on social media?
Yes.
We did, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, on Facebook and Nextdoor.
Okay.
Um, so, and we got, we got quite a few responses from Facebook and Nextdoor. I did them, I can tell by the timing of when they came in, which people were responding to. But I, like I said, I, I think, you know, continue doing the stuff we've been doing. Probably need to reach out to see the people that aren't doing email and, and social media, if there's something we can do to do better for them. But from what we know now, like I said, keep doing what we're doing.
Yeah, and there's probably a correlation between the age respondents and the media, media, media.
Yeah, that could be.
We're emailers.
But I'd like, yeah, I'd be interested if we, if we do reach out through other media, if we get the same sort of thing response that, you know. For direct mail, I was going to, I, I didn't get a chance to talk to, Susan Wheeler is also conducting a Parks Improvement Survey right now. And they mailed out survey cards to, I can't remember, a lot of people.
Random sample?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
And I'm not sure, they're, and I'm waiting to see what their response rate is in terms of direct mail.
Okay.
As opposed to just my kind of blast it out there and see what comes back approach.
Anita has got a hand up, yeah. Go ahead.
Now, I want to thank you, Doug, and the staff. I thought this, the results of this were very interesting in several ways, both in terms of the media that people reported using and the, the messages that were important to them. That, to me, that made some suggestions on things to continue to emphasize how people really were especially interested in police news and safety issues. And that, and the frequency that they use Facebook, though, again, as you say, it might have been, you know, self-fulfilling. I wanted to suggest, is it time to think about, since we are, have put on hold the funding for a communications person, which is understandable given the COVID economic impact? Might we want to consider approaching the Penn State Communications Department to see if there would be an intern, like CNET has, who would be willing to come do some work with the website or expand some things in social media? Is this something that an intern would welcome for the glory of helping Pat and Township at a very low cost reimbursement salary to them? But is this something that we might want to consider over the next year to begin to offer support in the communications area? And also, I was very interested in the resident suggestions. Thank you for including that question about what would the residents like to say to Pat and Township? And the one person who suggested an app, and I'm not into apps, but, you know, there were some excellent resident comments. I thought that, and I was surprised at how many people mentioned AM/FM radio as a news source for them. So I thought it was a very informative survey that we can build upon as communications go forward. And I thank you and the staff of just very well-done results. But I would like to toss out the idea that we consider a Penn State intern to assist in communications until we can.
Yeah, we can.
Budget-wise.
Yeah, we can do that. I, I'm still hopeful that we can get our communications person on board. We'll, you know, Larry will report here next. You know, probably in the next 60 days, we'll have a really good idea of what revenues are going to be like, much better than we know today. But, you know, my, at this point, we've just delayed the hiring of the comm communications person. We haven't, we haven't froze it. So I, I would really, I think it would be really good if we could get somebody on either late this year or early next year. But we'll, you know, we'll see.
And how appropriate, because Larry was heading up the communications committee when we were looking at the new website. So I guess taking away Larry, COVID-19 financial update.
Let me find him.
Where is he?
There he is.
There he is.
Hello. Hi, hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hello, Larry.
Okay, good, you can hear me.
Yeah.
Is he upstairs?
So, so far, you know, the expenses that we're, we're seeing related to COVID have slowed down from the peak we had back in March and April. We've spent almost $151,000. The majority of it was the leave that we had our employees on. We, we paid them for their full time, even though we had them stay home to avoid any contact. And that was about $119,000. But $25,000 we got for employees that work from home. The reason why both of these numbers are, are important is because when it comes time for our workers' comp audit, we shouldn't be paying a higher workers' comp rate for public works employees who were staying at home. So that should reduce our workers' comp and help offset that cost. The other small items are software and PPE. We didn't spend too much on that, about $1,200 on PPE. And the, as Doug was saying, we still haven't seen a, a drastic decrease in earning income tax. Our real estate taxes came in very well. The good part about that was most of that is taken care of before the pandemic and is held by EstroCon, so they paid. So we're okay as far as revenues on, on real estate taxes. We're starting to see some slowdown because we, you know, had extended the, the period that they could pay the face value till the end of September. So we expect it to come in a little bit slower now, but we do expect it to come in. As far as earned income tax, we haven't seen a lot of reduction of that yet. Though I do, as Doug said, think that within the sec, next 30 to 60 days, sometime in the mid of August, when we see the second quarter numbers, we'll have a better idea of what's happening with those finances, those revenues. There any questions?
Any questions, board? Wait, okay, I don't see any. None here. Doug, anyone?
No.
Yeah, it sounds good. It sounds not bad.
Yes, so far not bad.
Yeah.
But no promises.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly, no promises.
So we're, thanks, Larry. So we're next revisiting the capital improvement plan.
For COG.
For COG, yeah.
Yeah, so.
The interplay there.
The Finance Committee got a preview last week of COG's 2021 program plan and their capital improvement plan for the next five years. I stole that from the Finance Committee Agenda and provided copies to the board. Because of our meeting schedule, you know, we won't have another chance to talk about this until August 19th. And, or 15th, whatever, 19th, yes. And COG is requesting comments back on August 20th. So I want to give everybody a heads up, an opportunity to start looking. I will, I'm waiting for a comment form to be forwarded to me from COG. If you recall from past years, we, there've been a series of questions or comments they've asked for input on. We're expecting that after the General Forum looks at this, I guess, next week. And once I have that in hand, I will forward that to the board members, my comments on there. Now, I've been through the program plan. It's much thinner than it has been in past years. It's only 100 pages. Like I said, I did go through it and the CIP, I think, on Monday afternoon. I have a few comments, but nothing, nothing dramatic or anything. I think COG is trying to, you know, they're, they're doing a status quo, more or less budget, I believe, and trying to save some money where they can. But I just want to get that out there. If anybody has looked at it, at those documents so far and have questions, we can get those back to COG at this point and see if we can get clarifications, if you have ideas, if you had, if you want more information. So with that, I'll turn it back to the board.
So any comments or questions? It looks like Pam's got her hand up. Pam, yeah.
Doug, I contacted.
Doug, I contacted Joe because the print was a little small, and he sent me a copy of the PDF, which I was able to enlarge a lot of the information I couldn't see. But he also said that there are going to be few changes, not many, to what we have. So to look for those changes coming in.
Yeah, it's, the Finance Committee, I think, is asking the General Forum to make some, you know, send that out after, is it Monday, next Monday, the meeting, or Monday after that? It might be the Monday after that. The Fourth Monday in July would be the General Forum meeting. So after that, we would hopefully have the, the updated version.
Great.
Your question?
Oh, sorry. Yes, thank you. If you do this, okay, yeah, wait, there you go. Sorry, Anita.
Doug, I noted on the contributions by municipality 2021 to 2025, which, thanks to Pam's PDF, I was able to blow up big enough to read, that Patent Township in 2021 is estimated at 382,000 and some dollars and going through 2025 where it's 374,000. Do you have a sense of how that, you know, is, is that fair? Is that typical? Is that something that, you know, you would expect?
Inflation?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, that all comes, gets generated then out of the COG formula. That I think was the last page, there was additional. So I mean, where that comes from, you know, our, our contribution is based on the budget that the elected officials draw up for the COG. And then after they've calculated all their other revenues, what's left gets paid by the municipalities and that gets divvied up by the COG formula. We've been in the 21% bracket for the COG formula probably for four or five years since we did the last major update of the formula, which is probably 10 years ago now, I think. But we've been right in that 21%, which, you know, is, as long as we stay there. In the past, we've had conversations, there've been conversation about the COG budget process. You know, for, for a while there, it was taking a bigger and bigger percentage of our overall budget. It seems to have kind of leveled out at this point. There was a debate last year on the COG budget of whether there was going to be a cap imposed on the increase. There'd been a cap on the increase for four or five years, and it was, there was no cap last year.
Or the year before, I think.
Yeah, I can't remember. So I don't know if that's another discussion for coming forward, but it's something we keep an eye on every year. And, you know, the, like most things in government, the less change, the better.
Depends which level of government.
Yeah, I mean, you know, extra, you know, we like to be able to, you know, plan for five years in advance and so, you know, yeah, those numbers don't seem out of, out of line for, to me.
Thank you. And Elliot, I think, had a question. Did you or not?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay. Pam, is there a hand up there? Okay. All righty. Let's see, I guess we're on, oh, yes. Any more questions then about the Council of Government, CIP? So that brings us to the resolution to encourage pandemic masking. And I'm going to ask Anita to give a brief introduction to that, and then we can discuss the resolution as presented. And thanks for spearheading this, Anita.
I will try to re-brief. As you know, the Center County Commissioners ask municipalities in Center County to consider passing a resolution on mask wearing. The Belfast Council passed one that was modeled after the counties. The counties had a number of whereas's, which were excellent documentation of medical matters regarding masks. The resolution that I drafted with Betsy's help kind of makes that not so elaborate on the whereas's, that just kind of speaks that, you know, masks help and doesn't go through all of the medical documentation. Hopefully, if anyone reads the resolution, they'll get to the therefor's. And among the therefor's, recognizing that resolutions are just educational, we don't have enforcement abilities on the masks requirement, but what can we do education wise? And some parts that are in the therefor's that this resolution would do would be to request that an image or a photo of a face with a mask be added or featured prominently on the Patent Township webpage until such, until December 31st, 2020, or until such time that the Board discerns, based on the scientific and medical data, that the wearing of face masks in public areas no longer needs to be the primary health practice. And another therefore is urging every business in Patent Township to take what is called the Center County Strong Pledge. This has recently been developed by the Chamber of Business and Industry in Center County, and they list those businesses on their website that have taken the pledge. And the pledge commits those businesses to institute and maintain public health practices for the employees and customers. And those include the wearing of masks and adhering to social distance. And they have a motto on Center Strong, Take the Pledge. They have posters and things that could be put on digital websites, or I think they're probably encouraging businesses to put them in their businesses. So this resolution would encourage all of the commercial businesses in Patent Township to take that pledge. And then to make available to the public some information resources for those who are concerned about where they can go where masks are prevalent. And there are two resources recommended. The first is the link to this Chamber of Commerce page on Center Strong, that they can see the Patent Township businesses, commercial businesses that have taken the pledge. And the second is a link to a public Facebook page called Stores Requiring Masks in Center County, which currently has more than 2,000 members who self-report on their experiences going into businesses and whether employees and customers are wearing masks. And putting that link on our website, we would have the disclaimer that by doing it, we're not endorsing or advocating the views of any individual posters on that Facebook site. But that site is already in circulation. It's already something that people are using, and a number of businesses are reporting in on that site as well. They are very aware of that site. And so those are two parts of the follow-through to let the public know if they're looking for information about Patent Township commercial businesses and mask regulation, that these are two sites that they could visit should they choose. So that is the, the nature of the proposed resolution.
Thank you very much. Any, actually, any legal questions there, Doug? And then any comments from the Board?
I just note, we had a couple of public comments. We had one from Mindy Haynes.
Oh, yes.
Who emailed us in support of the masking. And Mr. Jim Payne, who's on our planning commission, called in earlier and also supports the resolution.
Okay. And Elliot, yeah?
There are two statements I've made, just some conversations with people that have attracted less argument than others. And one is the idea that if you think it's hurting your freedom, does that mean you don't want to, you're not going to wear a seatbelt? Most people have accepted the idea they're going to wear a seatbelt, even though that took a while for it to become a cultural item. And the other is believing in the Second Amendment doesn't mean that I'm encouraged to walk around at a store brandishing a legal weapon, because it could be thought of as being reckless endangerment. And that's what not wearing a mask is.
No argument from me. Any, any other comments? Does anybody want to make a motion to?
I'll move that we adopt this proposed resolution, although it needs to be drafted as a resolution. This, right now, it's, it's just a, you know, a draft that we can evaluate.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and adopt it, I'll put it into our Patent Township format and get Betsy's signature on it here and there, too.
I have one minor little grammar correction, which I'll pass on to you.
And then we've already got a second? I think that's what, I think that it's either a second or victory.
Thank you.
Yeah. So any more discussion on the resolution? And seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is passed. And thank you, Anita, also, for spearheading this. It was great. I guess that brings us to committee reports. What, oops, no, I skipped the page.
Consent agenda, we've got all the exciting stuff.
Consent agenda and the marriages report, how could I skip that? Okay. So I think with consent agenda, I just simply ask for a motion to.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
And we got a second over here by Mr. Abrams. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we can check that off our list, and now we're onto the really exciting part. Okay.
Hang on.
Obviously.
Let me get the agenda up if I can. Are you seeing the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Had a conversation with CNET about starting time for August meeting. Cindy had asked if we were making a permanent move. I said no, because we don't know what normal is going to be. But there's, there's a minor issue. They start, there's a, at 2:00 PM, there's a borough meeting that is a rebroadcast of the Borough Council meeting from the, the prior Monday. And normally, as long as it's done by 4:30, we can go live here. It would be helpful if, because the borough meetings have been trending longer and longer, that if we could move to 5:00 PM, there'd be a better chance that we can go live when we start. So I'd ask if that's okay with the Board? Go ahead and make that change.
Aye, fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll report that to Cindy. And then we can start, I, you know, if you want to, we can start thinking about September then, too, about what we might want to do. In terms of, I won't go through all the correspondence items unless there's questions. The housing starts, there was a little uptick in housing starts in the last quarter. We'll see if that continues. And then the last item, I just want to, we did have a suspected oak wilt case on Morningside Circle. If you want to see what classic oak wilt looks like, go see this tree, because it's, it has, it's a classic case of oak wilt. We're, we're getting it tested. But, you know, if, I've seen enough of these to know that this probably will come back positive. So once we get that, we'll work with the property owner and go through our regular protocol of, of doing all the things we have to do to make sure it doesn't spread. With that, unless there's questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the.
Doug?
Okay, I'll go first. I think, who's that, Anita?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let me go first. On Vinner Township.
Yep.
You were at that meeting.
Yeah.
What was their vote?
They voted three to zero to approve the resoning. Yeah, sorry, I forgot to include that, yeah. So the airport was there, George was there from the Airport Authority, as well as the President, Chris Grushel, a couple of representatives from PSU, but they, they heard everybody and then took action and approved it, so.
Okay. Anita, you had a comment?
That was, that was my question also. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I did have one question for Ken on the development update, on the, all the construction. Did they say when they're going to begin that construction?
No, I, I'm trying to remember if we've approved their permit yet. I know I, I'm meeting with Mr. Poole on Friday, so I'll make sure I ask that question.
Thank you.
So Doug, anything else you want to?
No, I didn't have anything else.
So he's going to see to the exciting committee reports. And we're going to start with Human Resources, Anita.
Okay. The Human Resources Committee met July 1 for a one-hour Zoom meeting. They approved an amended job description for the Sklo Library Director search. The current director, Kathy Alloway, has announced her retirement, scheduled to occur next year in 2021. And the amended addition was to clarify within the job description to whom the director reports. She has two bosses, the library board and the COG Executive Director, and that will be added in more explicit terms in the job description. She did report that the irritation level of residents, and this was earlier in July, hopefully it's lowered a bit, that, that her staff has been on the receiving end of anger from some of the patrons when they're picking up their books remotely. They can, you know, come to the front of the library or the staff brings them out. But that's been adding to the stress of the library staff. I thought to myself, who yells at librarians? But they've been encountering some really angry stress levels in the population. The Park District Director, Pam Salatangas, reported that the workload created by COVID has increased the staff load, both in terms of how they're answering more emails and in calls that are questioning, wanting to know details about the park policies in light of COVID and in implementing changes in the operations. For instance, some people don't understand the COVID rules on swim lessons, that you can't have some swim lessons because of the six-foot distancing. But it is allowing for more time for open swimming. And she said that their staffing is not deep enough to have backup for some operations. If one of their key people gets sick, they don't have anybody to step in for them. So they have, unfortunately, they've had good health, but that is a concern. And on a minor point, the COG Executive Director said that in future budgeting years, they're looking to contract with a recording service to write up the minutes of these various committee meetings, so that it's not using the time of the professional staff to write up those minutes. And they're also exploring more interns as a way of meeting the needs. And the COG is, staff is walking a tightrope to support the people working from home and yet provide the public services. And they're looking to develop the official remote work policy. And they are also talking of fall planning if this county is forced back into yellow stage, whether, for instance, if that happens, they would need to equip home workers with more up-to-date computers. And they do anticipate a financial hit. So that was all of the things that were discussed with priority emphasis at the meeting. So that was all of the things that were discussed with priority emphasis at the meeting.
Thank, thank you very much. And I will, oh, actually Larry. I had to cede my vote to Larry. This was in the midst of my Lyme disease trial. Solar Power, Larry. Solar Power Working Group, please. Larry? Oh.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Can you?
Okay, I believe that the solar power purchase meeting, we, we looked at the revised cost-sharing agreement for the Energy Consultant and forwarded it to, for, we're sending it out for signatures from each of the organizations. The RFP for the Energy Consultant Services is ready lengthy. And it is done. And I think we're looking to put that out in the end of August, beginning of September. And we looked at the timeline of the project and moved it back because of missing the meetings and due to the coronavirus. Do you remember anything else, Betsy?
No, and I'm sorry I put you on the spot about that.
No problem. My, that, I wasn't, I wasn't ready for it. I'm ready for the ad hoc facility.
Yeah, gotcha. Sorry, my bad. Yeah, I don't remember too much from that. Except that the, the timeline was pushed back, and that's to be expected.
The timeline was pushed back. Joe's running around getting signatures for the cost-sharing agreement. And the RFP, I think it's beginning of September, they're looking to have it coming.
Thanks for that. I appreciate that. Okay. So two days, one day later, I actually can claim full cognizance at the Public Services and Environmental Committee. Though I had to slide through that. The, the first item that we talked about was the, the occurrence of, back in March, I believe it was, when the CCRA, Center County Resource and Recycling Authority did not collect recycling. And Advanced Disposal basically kept the $90,000 that ordinarily would have been exchanged had they been doing the recycling. So some residents, about 30 people, 30 customers from Advanced Disposal, questioned how much they, you know, how much of their monthly payment, which was $5.21, you know, is essentially not being accounted for because Advanced Disposal did not have to pay any fees. And we're wondering if they could get that back. What, in, you know, long discussion, we got a lot of information. As it turns out, the, we, the county, the Center County Resource and Recycling Authority, actually spent a lot of time and money, which amounted essentially to more than $5.21 per customer because they had to provide extra services, like picking up from drop-off points. And then also, in the successive month of April, people who perhaps had decided to hold on to the recyclables and then put them into the recycling stream in April, drove up the amount of recycling, so that increased the cost. So it was pretty much a wash. But we did agree that we needed increased transparency on what happened out of respect to people who had a question about that. It's fair enough. The second thing that we talked about was the climate, in the Climate Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan and the vulnerability assessment. What we are doing, what the staff is doing, is piggybacking off of the hazardous mitigation plan, which is already up and running. And so that is predicting the, the impact of winter storms, floods, droughts, stormwater management, and so on. And so the, the folks doing the hazardous, doing the vulnerability assessment will get information, use that hazardous mitigation plan information. Pardon me? Oh, sorry. And then, and in September, we'll be looking at the mitigation plan.
On the first item, so the conclusion is that nobody's trashing Advanced Disposal at this point.
Nobody's trashing it. And actually, I, I will say, not as an aside, but another part of that is that Advanced Disposal and the CCRA are going to be conversing. So COG may act as an intermediary if needed or requested. Next, we're going to the ad hoc facilities. And this is the one that I guess Larry and Dan?
Yeah, Larry usually reports.
Okay, Larry, take it away.
I have, I will report on it. So we had a meeting that was held at Millbrook Marsh Nature Center in the pavilion. So we, the first thing we did was tour the Millbrook Marsh Nature Center and looked at the repairs that are going on to the, to the boardwalk and what parts of the boardwalk were closed. And then we came back from that and discussed the RFP that, that they're, that went on for initial review with the DCNR, that they're looking to, at drawings of how to, to change the boardwalk materials and the direction. Because the boardwalk, obviously, the materials don't, pre-treated lumber doesn't last forever. And also, some of the, the poles that are holding in the boardwalk are moving the creek, a creek, depending on whether you're from Pittsburgh or not. The creek, one place to another. So, once they get the RFP back from the DCNR, from their review, then we're hoping that the new facilities coordinator will review it before it goes on. The next thing that Pam had reported on was the Park Forest Pole Replaster Project. It started at the end of May. They came in and did it. They had to make some repairs to it. But now it is, it is complete and came in well under budget. The Code renovation project, they're looking to move into the new office suite, which is Suite 1. They're shooting for mid-August to move in. The paint and the carpeting is done. They're waiting on furniture and some glazing of the windows and some lighting. And the lighting is the next critical path item that will determine whether they can move in in mid-August. Then we had a, a long discussion about our facilities vision statement. And there was a gentleman there, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't remember his name, maybe Dan does.
John, uh?
He works, he works for Code.
John Frennic.
Yeah. And he is working on, we all had our homework and turned it in, and he's working on compiling that to create a, a vision statement. So there was a lot of discussion on the mission statement and the vision statement. I believe the committee agreed on a mission statement, though I didn't note down exactly what it was. And he created a couple of different vision statements. So we're going to, we're going to continue to work on the, the vision statement in the next meeting. We discussed the COG Building Parking Lot Study. This study was more than we expected to get. Our next step would be to look at the recommendations they had given us, which was the, the, the company that did the, the study and prioritize it for the CIP. The, we looked at, again, the report that looks at all the, all the facilities and who owns them and how much, and it had been updated with some maintenance. And then we had a long discussion on the Parks Maintenance Facility. We discussed the history, that it was originally discussed in 2013, and trying to forward as to what we're going to look at as a, as a facilities committee on our recommendation on whether we should continue the rent where we're renting, rent someplace else, or build a Parks Facilities, a maintenance facility. And that was basically the end of our meeting.
Ongoing discussion on that. Maintenance facility. Yeah, thank you, Larry. Next, we come to Finance. Dan, Tremena.
Finance Committee, you see the list of the different agenda items there. The CATA, Capital Local Match, there's a, a three-year local match plan and it expires this year. So they are presenting a, a, a match plan for the next three years. No increase in annual totals to maintain a capital reserve account ending balance similar to past results. And the Finance Committee agreed to forward this to the General Forum meeting at the end of this month for approval. We got the COG, sorry, the COG Agency Directors presented, oh, the program plan. Certainly, yeah, the 2021 Program Plan and, and CIP, which we now have. Doug has printed it out and forwarded it to us. So we agreed to ask the General Forum to accept the, these plans and present them at the General Forum to request municipality comments. Doug mentioned that that program plan was a lot shorter than years past and, and that is because the Finance Committee did agree to, for the, for the COG to shorten the process, given all the COVID issues that are going on financially. So it, as Doug said, it is basically a maintenance, status quo maintenance plan for, for next year. We reviewed a summary by Mr. Chris Givens of Concord Public Financial Advisor, who looked at scenarios for refinancing the, the two loans, the Whitehall Road Regional Park Loan and the, and the Fools Loan. And we agreed to, to have him proceed with a more formal process to try to come back with details about, you know, financing options. So that we, we'll discuss that at our August meeting. A couple of reports, financial, the fund balance report and, you know, from the different agencies' fund balances, current fund balances, and also the financial updates from the various agents, agencies. So we received those reports. And basically, that's about it. Larry, anything I skipped over or missed that you think?
No, you're right. We received the reports and the financial update report. And we did not do the theme of reimbursement discussion because we did not have a forum after 10:30. We, we had people leave the meeting and they had to leave at 10:30, so we had to end the meeting there.
There you go.
Right.
Great, thanks, Dan. Anita, we're on to the Parks Capital Committee.
Yes. Under the reorganization, there was an election of a chair and a vice chair for the committee. The nominations for chair were Laura, is it pronounced, Denini?
Denini, yeah.
Denini, thank you. The nominations for chair were Laura Denini of Ferguson and Bruce Lord of Harris Township. And in a three to two vote, Laura Denini was elected. For the vice chair, the nominations were Eric Bernier of College Township and yours truly. And in a three-two vote, I was elected vice chair. On the Millbrook Marsh Board Feasibility Study since, and Larry, thanks for the good update on what the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee did. Since that time, the DCNR, the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, has approved what's called the RFP, the Requests for Proposals. And so now the step is, there'll be research done on two to four designs, options, and material preferences for the boardwalk, which will then be brought back, those options to various committees for input, and then to look at the next step of going for a grant for the work on that. And so the Parks Capital Committee officially endorsed the feasibility and design services request for the proposal to go to advertising. And that advertising was supposed to start shortly after the meeting. On the Whitehall Road Park Update, the park remains underfunded at this time on certain parts of it, and they're looking at various options. One thought is to make changes in the design to make, to meet the budget available. For instance, tightening the square footage in the playground from 17,000 feet to 15,000 feet and seeing if that can bring it in under budget. They do have funding for the site work itself, for the earth-moving, the walking trails, but not funded is the restroom building, storage for maintenance, irrigation, and some lodging. And so those were the highlights of that meeting.
Great, thank you very much. And there was no Public Safety Committee meeting. The climate, the tag meeting, Climate Action and Adaptation Committee meeting. That, it was actually Monday. I was unable to attend at the last minute, so I will review that next meeting. I'll watch it on, on tape. And I think, Dan, that you, you didn't meet the cable consortiums. I don't think there are any other?
There are reports from the Borough Water Authority and County Airport Authority were included in the agenda.
Uh, any other business issues? Oh, whoops.
Yep, also the?
Pardon?
The CCMPO meeting.
Oh, where are you? There, I missed that. Sorry about that. Please, go ahead.
We also need to make a correction. I am, I am. Okay, thank you.
Oh, gotcha.
The CCMPO met June 23rd. We had a presentation by Tom and Ann, the 2020 Center County Air Quality Conformity Determination Report, and the 2021 to 2024 Center County Transportation Improvement Program. They had comments from the community. A direct, a notification was sent out. They had their first virtual public meeting, which ended at June 8. An action that was taken, they approved the responses to the.
Oops, we lost your audio, Pam.
And she's for, okay. Is it frozen?
They approved that also. The Center County TIP final draft, action taken, approved. Procedures for the TIP revision, that also was re-approved. The federal transportation planning process self-certification resolution, that also was approved. The long-range transportation in 2015, no action was taken. There was a moment of reflection, remembering the life of Ivan Boyd. He was a Howard Rural Councilman and a dedicated member of the CCMPO Technical Community Committee. Passed away at the age of 80. Passed away at the age of 82. You can read his amazing accomplishments on the COG website. Ivan left MPO staff and officials, a living memory. Years ago, Ivan purchased six ceremonial scissors for ribbon cutting for the Howard, Howard Rural rail trail. His gift, he gifted the scissors to the MPO staff. As a ribbon-cutting event are held in the future for projects across Central County, Ivan's community service will be celebrated each time the ceremonial scissors are used. Reports, there were no actions. The announcement, further date for the CCMPO Technical Committee meeting is scheduled for today. Two things on the future agenda of the long-range transportation plan. They will try to adopt a new plan by September. They're going to try to hold public comment period sometime in August. It is still within the July timeframe. The second issue that they're on, that's on the agenda, is the State College Connection Project underway, and giving plans to kick it off is in progress. They would like to do an introductory presentation to the MPO in July, but due to staff shortage, the committee has chosen to schedule a meeting for August 4th at the end. That ends my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's, it's hard to see again when people stop and when they're starting. So, I think we've covered all of the committee reports and other reports, but we have a hand raised over here. Elliot, yes?
If anyone has anything they'd like me to bring up at the COG exec meeting next week, let me know.
Call for COG exec items, okay. We'll do. Anything else? I would entertain a motion at this point.
Move, adjourn?
Second? Okay, we got a second. So moved, the...
Pam had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was a second. Yes, please.
I just would like to see if we could have a meeting, Betsy, Dan, Elliot, well, the board. The Habitat for Humanity has a house in Patton Township. It's a first for me. We're looking, if it's possible in the near future, maybe to do a presentation, but to also, if Doug and, I mean, if Doug and Dan can meet with the executive director, Stephanie Fox, she can give you a little more information on the house that's in Top Tree that's going to be available shortly.
Okay, well, I can reach out to Stephanie.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Great. Sounds good. Anything else? So, I think we have a motion, and I was, I, sorry, Cam, I didn't see your hand up before we, I asked for the...
Second?
We have a second for the adjournment of the meeting. Any discussion? If not, signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye. So adjourn.